I got one from Saint Francis of Sisi. It says, "Where there is discord, may we bring harmony; where there is error, may we bring truth; where there is doubt, may we bring faith; and where there is despair, may we bring hope." When we did that in the House of Representatives, we just got the Senate and the White House to go.[25.34][25.34](APPLAUSE). Bobby Shilling came over from Moline, and it looks like unless the court will return that he's going to be our representative in Congress from the most of the city, somewhere close to Alpine, looking there west, and will take any old traditional 16th district going out to the river. And I asked them to give me some things to talk about, and they did, and I'll tell you about, this is the kind of guy you need in government because they came up with it. Bobby Shilling is a small business owner, father of ten, and husband of Christie Shilling for 25 years. Together they started Saint Giuseppe's Restaurants in Moline in 1996. Before opening the restaurant, he worked as a financial advisor and insurance agent, and worked for McMillan Bladell Container Corporation of America for 13 years. Like a lot of us, he had to work for 11, and Dad didn't send him a trust check. And as a conservative, Bobby's role model is former president and Illinois native Ronald Reagan.[102.28][102.28](APPLAUSE). He firmly believes the United States is taxed enough already, and spending is way out of control, and his time for conservatives should work together to win back the Senate and the White House, kind of like Saint Francis. In 2010, when he ran the first time, Congressman Shilling signed his contract with the 17th District, which he's going to do again. He made a group of promises. Among them, he rejected the five-year congressional pension. I think all of us agree, five-year pensions for Congress are, it's just not how life ought to be. Reject the pay increases, not take the Congressional Health Care, and turn limit himself to four terms in the House of Representatives.[151.81][151.81](APPLAUSE). I don't know what the limit ought to be, but there's gotta be one. Thirty years, I know, is too long. Bobby's main goal is to create jobs, repeal the big government health care takeover that was passed last year, reform the culture of Washington. I remember years and years and years ago reading that my ancestors said they were gonna drain the swamp. I haven't gotten there yet. And to serve the constituents of the 17th District in the best of his ability, that's all we ask of anybody. Ladies and gentlemen, let me give you Bobby Shilling.[191.12][191.12](APPLAUSE).
Good morning. It's good to be here today. What I've gotta say is with the map, we don't know how this thing's gonna work out. We actually tried to, we've gotta be careful because of the lawsuit that's going on. We tried to get Don Manzou to possibly come to be here also, but he has some other arrangements going on. But we should know sometime next week, hopefully, or the week after, as to exactly where the lines are going to be. And I think the one thing that we look at is here in Illinois, you know, it's where the politicians pick the voter, and voters really, what we deserve constitutionally is we ought to be able to pick our representatives. So, you know, it's frustrating if you take a look at the map of which I'm representing the 17th currently right now, if you take a good look at it, what it looks like literally is a rabbit on a skateboard.[239.73][239.73](LAUGHTER). But it's a sad thing because what they did was they came through Springfield, for example, and they, there's three of us, there's now Shock, Shilling, Schimpkes, but there's a bike path there, and in a little certain section of that bike path, there are no voters, which is, I believe, unconstitutional, and I don't believe that that should have ever been able to be passed. And it was done by both parties, taking care of one another, so it's not limited to one side or the other. But just, I'm gonna give a couple little things that we've been doing in DC. I talked to Joe Walsh yesterday, and it's funny because he got hit on that, most of us have probably seen when he was having his, you know, cup with Joe, cup with Joe, but I told him, I said, "Joe, I said, "Your message was awesome." I said, "You've gotta calm down the way you deliver that thing." And he's the most smiling in this guy, and I'll tell, like, you know, he's got a heart of gold, he's really a good guy. But, you know, we've all got a tough fight because what the Democrats in Illinois have done is they've taken what we citizens have done and flipped this map in Illinois to where right now it's 11 Republicans and then eight Democrats. And we're gonna lose a seat because we've got so much bad government going on, people are fleeing from our state. We're losing one seat, and what the Democrats of Illinois have done is they've flipped it to where it'll be a six Republican to 12 Democrat map.
Oh.
Yeah. And Nancy Pelosi and Dick Durbin love this idea because this is a way, they've got what they call the drive to 25. Dick Durbin doesn't like me for some reason.[344.62][344.62](APPLAUSE). And I've gotta be forward, the feeling's mutual.[355.31][355.31](APPLAUSE). You know, when you have somebody that is literally driving not only the state of Illinois, but our country into the ground, we've gotta do some changing. And what I've gotta, first off, I wanna thank the Tea Party folks here for what you've done, but our work is far from over. When I give speeches in Washington DC, I start out this way. I say, "Hi, I'm Bobby Shilling, I represent the people of the Illinois 17th District, and I come from the state where our governors make our license plates."[403.12][403.12](APPLAUSE). Which we back at home, you know, it's funny, but at the same time, it's sad. Because if you look at the assets that we have here in Illinois, I mean, Illinois is the poster child for what's wrong with America.
Right.
Truly. Because they believe that we can overtax, overregulate companies into prosperity. And what they're doing is they're continuing, we, I just had a guy to give an example of the difference, and most of you probably know this, but the guy has a trucking firm, and he called me up, and he says, "Bobby, I want you to come out and tour my facility." And he goes, "We're gonna expand, and I'm looking real hard at going over into Iowa." And I'm like, "Oh, my goodness, this guy has, you know, he's a small business owner, hundred and some employees." So I go out there and I talk to him, and he tells me, "If I go 15 to 20 miles just across that river, workman's compensation for my company is $150,000 a year less." Folks, that's a problem. And what I'm gonna tell each and every one of you here today is, you know, I hear people say, "Oh, I'm only a precinct committeeman." You know what? Right now, America is calling on each and every one of us to engage the process because the America that you and I grew up in, the Illinois that you and I grew up on, in this next election could be forever changed. Because it's just like what David was saying, you know, they want a socialized European-style America. What got me off the couch, as I call it, is, you know, I tell people is that, while I was minding my own business, this like came to me. I was raising my family, at the time, we only had nine children, now we've been blessed with 10. God has been very good to Bobby Shilling to be quite forward with that. But, you know, I'm watching the destruction of our great state and our country before my very own eyes. And I said to my wife, it was just after President Obama was elected, it was the day after, because my daughters came to the room and they said, "Who won the election?" And we're pro-life, of course, we believe that life begins its conception. And one of my daughters started to cry, she's like, "Oh Daddy, what are we gonna do?" And she left that day, and, I mean, it was just unbelievable with her doing that to me. I'm like, oh, I said, looked at my wife, I said, "You know what? I've gotta do something." Now, if anybody in this room would've told me five years ago that I would run for the US House of Representatives, I would've told them they were crazy. I never had any intentions whatsoever to run for a political office, ever. But what I did was I told my wife, I said, "You know what? I'm gonna pray discernment about this." And I came back home two weeks later, and I said, "Hey, I've got it figured out." And she looked at me like, "Oh, my gosh." Because when Bobby usually does something, it's not something small. I said, "I'm gonna run against Phil Hare." And she goes, "That's the US House of Representatives." I said, "I know it is." I said, "But I feel a strong calling, and, you know, with the help of the taxed enough already party..." And here's something I wanna be really forward with, you know, they're gonna continue to try to beat us down. They're gonna call us the Tea Party extremist. I just had a little fundraiser, and they were calling it Try Out Bobby Shilling's Tea Party Pizza, one of the candidates that's in the 17th. But here's the thing, you guys, when the media comes to me and they say, "Are you a Tea Party candidate?", I ask them a question. I say, "Are you asking me if I believe that we're, we've been taxed enough already? Do I believe in a limited government giving power back to the people?" I say, "You know, if that's what you're asking me, yeah, but you know what? If you're trying to paint us all as these extreme folks, you know, that's just wrong." So we gotta, when they ask you, "Are you one of those Tea Party people?", what you need to do is say, "Are you asking me if I believe that we've been taxed enough already?" And we need to defend what we stand for. Amen?[665.13][665.13](APPLAUSE). Just gonna run through a couple of things here, and then I'll start to take some questions. The Stock Act, that's where members of Congress can get insider information, Nancy Pelosi.[684.13][684.13](LAUGHTER). And actually go in and buy stocks, knowing that they're gonna skyrocket, and go from a millionaire to multimillionaire, or 20 millionaire, or what, maybe even get into the billionaires. I was actually the first Republican freshman to sign on to that bill. Here's the thing, when I did my contract, I believe that our founders, they had so much wisdom, I mean, it's amazing what they knew way back then that could affect us in a positive way. But I believe what they did was, was they set us up, they set this whole thing up to where citizen legislators would come and get into office, serve for a specific period of time, whether it's eight, 10, 12 years. Basically, it doesn't matter if you're selling cars, working at Walmart, whatever, take your tool belt off, set it to the side, go in with the voice of the people, just like what David was talking about. We're not the, we're not, it's not our ideas, we take your ideas to Washington DC and say, "Here's what we think." And then when we're done serving, we come back home, we put our tool belt back on, and we go back to work.
Right.[762.13][762.13](APPLAUSE).
One of the problems we have is we have too many people in Washington DC, they have nowhere to go after they're done. For me and my family, it's truly an honor to serve. When I'm out in DC, I miss my family greatly. Thank God for FaceTime, because I can get them on there and talk to my wife every night, and we pray before the night is over, and my little four-year-old will pull herself up on the chair and say, "Hey Dad," you know, but it's hard, but it's for a cause greater than ourselves.[803.11][803.11](APPLAUSE). You know, when you look at things like Solyndra, Fast and Furious, you know, it kinda reminds you of the old days when we had Kitchin. And I'm telling you right now, the Solyndra probing is the tip of the iceberg. There's a lot more of this going on, going on. It's what we, a lot of us here in the room would probably call pay-to-play. You help us out, we'll help you out. Heads should be rolled, people should be fired, there's none of that going on. The election we have this next time around is huge. We have to gain back the United States of America and get our houses in order. Give you just a couple of the bills that I've done since I've been there. I've got a, it's called SOS, Saving Versus Overspending. And what happens is, a lot of our agencies, they get an annual budget, they get to the last 30 days of their fiscal year-end, they got, let's say you get a million bucks, you got 200,000 bucks left over, what do you do?
Spend it.
Just spend down, incentivize to waste our tax dollars. So what this bill does, it incentivizes to save. What we're gonna do, and it's kinda hard because you gotta give them an incentive, but you take 50% of that, you apply that to the national debt, 50% stays with the agency, their, their, next year's budget remains the same, but they can't accumulate it, they've gotta use it for something smart, you know, it's gotta be for good things, because right now what we've got going on just definitely doesn't work. Another one is the Congressional Pension Change. Right now, Congress, now, everybody in here that can work for five years and gets a full-blown pension, raise your hand. That's, that's what I thought. What this bill does is, you can work for five years, and that's why I rejected the pension, I believe that it's wrong, you know, it's not about a career, it's about serving people. But what this does is, currently, you can work five years, you can retire Congress as early as age 50. What this does is this puts members of Congress right in line with regular Americans, 65, 67, just like Social Security. It was funny because my chief of staff, she says to me, she goes, "You know, boss, now when you put this on the House floor, there's gonna be some people that are mad at you." And I looked right at her, and I said, "You know what, Betsy?" I said, "I am not here for the wall plaque, I'm here to fix America."[956.13][956.13](APPLAUSE). Yeah, we could go ahead and roll through some, I could stay up here for days, man, so.
We don't have days. Everybody think about this, we came to hear him, not you, ask a question. Your comments are not requested or appreciated. Does somebody have an actual?
John, one quick?
Yeah.
Sure.
Thank you. I always hate being first.
There's, there's this amendment called the 16th Amendment that we hate, and I'd like to know whether or not you would be willing to sign off on repealing it, or whether you'd be willing to lead the charge to repeal it. What is your opinion of the 16th? It is the reason why we have been enslaved in this country. So, we don't like the 16th Amendment, we wanna see it repealed. What are your thoughts?
That's a really, really good question. Here's the thing, you know, we're looking at fair tax, flat tax, consumption tax, they're all great if the 16th Amendment's repealed. But if we, I don't believe that we can put in, I don't trust the government, just plain and simple.[1033.01][1033.01](LAUGHTER). Well, there's a few people I trust, but, but it's few, but my concern is like with the fair tax, flat tax, whatever, if we allow that 16th Amendment to remain intact, what's gonna happen is they're gonna come back in and say, "Okay, now we've got that pushed onto these people, now let's add income tax back on." But I think that what we need to do, our tax system needs major reform, and I think that a fair tax, flat tax is something definitely worthwhile as long as the 16th Amendment is taken out. But if you don't take that out, what's gonna happen, I guarantee it, is these folks are going to flat tax, fair tax, you know, whatever tax we decide, and then in three or four years, they're gonna say, "Hey, you know what? We've gotta throw that income tax in." So I would definitely be, if we could get to a fair or flat tax consumption, something that made it level across the playing field, definitely.
Want to hear a question?
Yes. My question is, is there any way to, or are there any restrictions under President and his wife, the amount of employees and the amount of salaries? I mean, it's astronomical, the amount of salaries that the White House is, is taking on.
Yeah, the, we tried to get rid of, I think, 12 or 13 of the czars earlier this year, and there, there's not really a way yet, and that's something that we are definitely working on, but we've gotta figure out a way to limit what these guys have going on. I mean, they've got, he's got a czar for everything. Now, I'm not sure if he's got a golfing czar yet, but.[1140.01][1140.01](APPLAUSE). You know what, folks, I tell you what's frustrating though, that my frustration with what's going on in Washington is that while America is on the brink of bankruptcy, Americans are struggling, we continue to surrender more jobs overseas because of the hostile environment that's been created by the politicians, these guys are out doing all these tours and vacations and golfing and things like that. You know, it's time to get to work. You know, and, you know, I really just think that they're just totally over their heads to be forward, so. I think the guy in the back here.
First meeting I've attended, I'm quite impressed. I'm just wondering. Welcome. What do you think about the super committee, and will that, will we have that budget taken care of by this Wednesday, or are we in trouble?
You know, I'm trying to be as optimistic as possible. We're supposed to have a conference Monday, they're gonna be there all weekend working through this thing, and, you know, the, I don't think there's too many of us that are real excited about the super committee. The biggest thing, there's people out there right now, if you notice, like, a big portion of the cuts that will come if they go and pull on the trigger on this equation, will be in defense of the United States of America. And there's some people in Washington DC, now, there's waste in the Department of Defense, don't get me wrong, you know, and I can name off, you know, a lot of things, but there's people in Washington DC that basically truly believe that we need to eliminate the military in the United States of America, and peace will flow throughout the entire world.[1256.13][1256.13](APPLAUSE). That's, that's no joke. But here's the deal, our one constitutional thing that we as the United States Congress need to do is defend the United States of America, and, you know, people talk about, if you, if you listen to who talks, they'll say, "Oh, yeah, you know, those two wars that Bush started." Well, you know what? We've actually got three wars started, because you gotta continue on with Libya, because that's a war. When you drop bombs on countries, it's an act of war, you know, whether you wanna, and to wait till the Congress goes home to decide to drop the bombs was another total issue. But I think with, with the Select Committee, I think the intentions are good. I was in an Ag meeting just this week, and Ag is gonna cut $4 billion more than what they were requesting. So, a lot of them, what they did is they said, "You guys need to cut here, 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 and here," and then people are saying, you know, "Here's our cut." But I know that suggestions are going in, but defense is something, we, just this year alone, we cut $489 billion over 10 years from defense. My biggest thing is defending America. Because if, if we can't defend her, you know, a lot of, all the things across the board, you know, don't matter if we can't defend ourselves, so. This young lady right here, real quick.
I have two questions. Explain to me about the Congressional District. You said it was going to be decided, you thought, within a week or two? Will it change, or will it, what's gonna happen?
It depends on, right now, the way the courts are looking at it, there's the Democratic map, that's the partisan map that was drawn, and then there's one that the Fair and Balance Committee drew, which, you know, it's gonna be tough to flip it over to be quite forward. So, more than likely, we'll end up with the map the Dems drew, and, you know, they just figured that I won't be able to win because they drew me into lower-income areas and things like that. But you know what they forgot? They forgot that I was born and raised in the western Iraq island, I come from the lower-income, those people are my friends. You know, they're not always looking for, they need, people that are poor, they just need to kind of show the way, incentivize to go to work rather than wait.
And train.
Exactly.[1406.63][1406.63](APPLAUSE).
Would you vote to repeal the Federal Reserve Act of 1913? Would you do that?
To eliminate the feds?
Federal Reserve Act of 1913, would you vote to repeal it?
You know, to be forward, I don't have enough information, and maybe that's something that David and I need to, need to talk about. I've got some friends that, with Ron Paul, that have given me a little bit of information, but, you know, if I could, before I leave, if I could get your information, or you know what, I'll get it, give it to David, I'll, I'll promise you this, I'll do this, is, I'll, I'll do a lot of research on it, and then I'll give you a yes or no, and then explain where I'm at on it.
Here's all the information you need.[1450.13][1450.13](LAUGHTER).
Was that a staged question? Thank you, sir. Yes, sir.
Recently, in the Congressional hearing, Elena Kagan was asked if she had brought in the influence to bear on Obamacare while she was Solicitor General. She said she had not. Later, an email showed up confirming that she had, which questions, one, why is she not being charged with perjury? And two, why is she allowed to sit on the bench adjudicating this case when in fact she had influence in its creation?
Yeah, that's a, that's a good question, knowing, there's a lot of that out there, and that's the, we're in a lot of trouble, you know, to be forward. As to, I'm not a lawyer or anything, but I would say this, is, you know, they're looking at, you know, she should be able to vote, and then, you know, one of our guys shouldn't because of his wife being tied in. But, but here's the thing, is that she's the person that was pushing, I call it Obamacare, I know some people get offended by that, but you know what? If I've got a bill that I'm really proud of, I'm gonna call it Shilling something. So, when people always say, "Don't call it Obamacare," I say, "Well, you should be proud of that." But I, I think that she should pull back off that, you know, now, you, it's amazing how things work out there, and, you know, thank God, the NFIB was able to push this thing through to where we get that, to where it's heard. And I think we've got a really good shot at this thing going down in flames, you know, because if you look at the mandate, a lot of people don't know this about Obamacare. There's a IPAP, it's an Independent Payment Advisory Board, and what that is, you could call it the Healthcare IRS. It's a group of 15 bureaucrats, the liberals hate this when you bring this up, 15 bureaucrats that are appointed, or as they do in Washington, anointed. They're anointed in, they get six-figure salaries, they have six-year terms, and they're gonna decide whether grandma gets the hip replacement, the knee replacement, or she just takes, as President Obama would say, "It's a blue pill." But it's a bureaucratic bunch of folks that are gonna try to save money that come between the patient and the doctor, and it's a, it's a bad thing. So, hopefully, you know, and it's a good idea to keep pressure on representatives, you know, and I know, you know, you send a letter up to the Senator, and he sends you back one, "Hey, John G. Public, resident," you know, and it's nothing to do with, but it's important that we kinda stay engaged and continue pushing, pushing things through, but, you know, it's, hey, there we go, 16,500 IRS agents in that bill. This is how we're creating jobs nowadays. You know, really, I mean, you're talking about helping that unemployment rate out, but I, I think that that thing definitely, and then what we do is we come back, and we have something, if we get this thing repealed, we come back with true healthcare reform that address costs because this thing did not, and, and something that's going to allow us to come to the floor and debate it in front of the American people, so we know what we got, and we don't need 2,000 and some odd pages either. And if it is a big bill, you know what they need to do, is they need to pass it in sections. You know, like Nancy said, "Hey, we'll find out what's in there after we pass it." And she's serious, "Now we're finding out what's in there, and, and we're not liking it." So hopefully, we keep our fingers crossed on that one and get that thing, yes?
Yeah, the, within the last couple of days, we've had the first cyber attack from Russia that destroyed the water treatment, some of the water treatment system in Springfield, Illinois. One of which, your comments may be on that.
I sit on the House Armed Services Committee for Readiness and Emerging Threats, and I've gotta be careful what I say, because some things have gone into private briefings, I gotta, cyber threats are real, and this is how, this is gonna, the next big thing that happens will be through cyber. China is responsible for about 50% of them. Iran, 25%. Russia, yeah, they're, they're in there, but this is scary stuff, because you're talking power grids, water supplies, things like that, we are dependent on so much out there that we've gotta make sure, you know, and they, they try, I mean, these guys, we're getting thousand hits a day, you know, to, you know, the Pentagon, you know, so we really need to step it up, and the big thing that I find in the government is that, you know, when you try to find somebody that's gonna go in and try to cut off that cyber stuff, you gotta try to find people that aren't gonna overcharge us, or that we're not gonna just overpay because we're the government. And that's the thing that just drives me nuts with the government, is because the government, you know, has all this free money, which is our money, our harder tax dollars, they think they can just pay people whatever, and I think that that's a major problem, but what we have to be able to do is take these things on and get good, solid Americans on there that are really, that know what they're doing. there that are really, that know what they're doing, because cyber's gonna be huge, you know, it's probably gonna be the big next problem.
Do you see that to be the CIA doing the protection, or independent Silicon Valley contractors?
Um, I think it's gonna probably be a little bit of both, is what we're seeing, I know central intelligence is, you know, doing quite a bit of stuff. Yeah, yeah, so.
I had a question.
Yes, sir.
If you could author and get passed one piece of legislation that you would be known for, that would be your legacy, what would that be?
Well, I never had that.
We have Obamacare.
Well, that one's, that one's gonna come, I think, you know, it's, you know, I think that the biggest thing that our country needs, something that would really greatly help us long-term, I'm a business guy, so I look at everything over ten years, and so on and so forth, but I think the biggest thing that we can do for the United States, and I know this is one of the biggest things, is term limit, because, here's why, because what happens in Washington DC is, you get these guys that are in there for thirty, forty, fifty years, and what happens is, every January one, they know that they've got lobbyists in the back pocket, no matter what, and, you know, if you term limit folks out, you know, you can know that, you know, I can go in there, be myself, you know, and not have to worry about, "How am I gonna get reelected?" Look at the President of the United States, for example, everything that he's doing is based upon the next election, whether it's the debt ceiling, for example, the Keystone Pipeline, several hundred thousands of jobs, American jobs, relieves our dependency upon those who wish to kill us, and it flows this oil and creates all these jobs, and it's safe with the technology that's there. But in order for him to keep his side happy, he wants to wait until thirteen, all of the tax increases that are coming are gonna happen in thirteen. If he's the President in thirteen, we're in trouble. Really, so, I think that's, that's something that's very critical. Yes, sir.
The Wall Street Journal newspaper this summer, you reported that the Social Security administration indicates that by totally eliminating the urban capital to the outer, and simply applying the five-way social security gap, you know, the system for the next seventy-five years would be eighty-six percent funded, would you be willing to be the chief sponsor of a bill, introduce it, build the man fact and time, there's so far no member has introduced that bill?
Yeah, I would, I would have to look at, we definitely need to do something to make sure that promises made are promises kept, and, you know, whether it's maybe bumping the age up, I mean, there's some talk of, I mean, there's different options you could weigh out, to bring it to age sixty-seven, you know, here's the thing, is, everybody in this room is paying into social security, and we need to make sure that we have that. Another problem we have is Medicare, you know, if you take a look at Medicare, think about this, has anybody ever heard, maybe you're hearing about Mr. Manzullo or Joe Walsh, is that any Medicare as you know it? Everybody knows Medicare's going broke in 2020, right?
Yeah.
The President came out and said it, and what happens is, for the last thirty years, think about this for a minute, for the last thirty years, every time there's an election cycle, what are we ending?
We're always ending Medicare, is what they put out there, because they wanna scare the
seniors, put the fear tactics in there, and what I always say to the seniors when I visit with them is, "How many in the room had their Medicare ended?", and no hands go up. And it's really sad, you know, here we are, we need to fix this thing, some are choosing to bury their heads in the sand, not come up with any solutions, the President had no solutions in his budget whatsoever. But, you know, we've gotta keep social security, Medicare intact, and the plan that we have actually does a pretty darn good job of it, fifty-five and older, you remain exactly the same, fifty-four and younger, you're able to pick and choose through competition which one plan you wanna get on, and David's got a question, Warren.
Oh, yeah, just, you know, you're gonna be, hopefully, if you get elected, you'll be representing Rockford, it's gonna be the first time since 1850, and we've got two congressmen, and that Rockford has not been the seat of that congressional seat. What is it that you plan in your, as a congressman, how is it that you can impact Rockford? Because, you know, we're selfish, we used to have Manzullo, okay, we got our own congressmen, now we're gonna have two guys, and you're not even home, Rockford, from down the south to the coast, but what is it that you would plan, how would you impact Rockford, how would you serve citizens for this seventeen congressional?
See, now, I would reverse off what you just asked me, because now what I would tell you, David, is that now Rockford has two voices in Washington DC. And, you know, there's a, there's somebody on the other side of the aisle that's running, and they're talking about their platform, about they're gonna create all these shapes and things like that, they're gonna tie in Rockford and the Quad Cities and Peoria for manufacturing base, that sounds beautiful, but what we have to do is, is we need to get an environment in Illinois, you know, here's what, here's the key thing, I believe, for Rockford, the Illinois Seventeenth, is that what we have to do is, we have to have representatives that have common sense, and people that are gonna basically be able to bring folks in from the outside and say, "Look at, look at the river, the rail, the hard-working individuals we have, right here in Rockford, in the Quad Cities, you know, we need you to come here." Some people believe that we, as officials, create jobs. You know, we can create temporary jobs, we saw all the temporary jobs created with stimulus, all the billions of dollars into the trillions, laid upon our kids and our grandkids, they're gonna have to pay all that debt back. What we create, and the key here is that, we create certainty, we create an environment where people wanna come to the greatest state in the nation to open the doors, and we do that through, not through what the President wants, with overregulation, overtaxing, we continue to run people out. You know, I talked to a gentleman earlier today, when I came in, and he talked a little bit about trade. Look at, here in America, we've got the best products that are available, right here at Rockford, I mean, look at the industry you guys have here, I mean, I think it's awesome, but I always use Caterpillar, which is in the Decatur plant, they've got, they make those big, huge mining trucks, they employ three thousand workers, eighty percent of those trucks ship outside of the United States. So that means that that plant in Decatur is responsible for twenty-four hundred jobs. People from outside of the United States aren't buying those trucks because of the cheapest, why are they buying them?
The best.
They're the best, they're looking at long-term, why these things are gonna last. Anybody ever put together a ceiling fan? And you go to screw, the screw in, and the screw twists off, you know where that screw was made?
That's right.
That's right, had it been made in the United States of America, you could've twisted that thing on till it cracked the glass on the boat. It's a fact. So, given the opportunity, with a level playing field, here's what we've gotta do, I believe, on a national level, we get the corporate tax rate down to fifteen to twenty percent. People say, "What, you wanna lower taxes?" Remove the loopholes, so you don't have three billion dollars of money coming in to companies, and they're not paying anything. You think about this for a minute, you can have a hundred percent corporate tax rate, you can pay every penny that they make in profit, but if you've got all the loopholes, and they don't have to pay anything, it doesn't matter. You know what I mean? So, level that playing field, broaden the base, you know, and if we could get a government that focuses in on creating that environment, I mean, think about the assets that we have in the ground, right here in Seventeenth, if we could get that environment, you know, and it's not through increased taxes, the highest tax increase in the history of the state, it's not through overregulation, but if we could get the environment, not only could we attract companies from outside of Illinois, we could take them from outside of the country, and, you know, that's the key, that's the main thing that we need to do, is create that atmosphere, and I don't believe that another four years with Barack Obama, that atmosphere will be able to be created. We wrapping it up?
You want to do the last, one last question, folks, one more.
You go ahead and bet. I might lose a vote.
I know this probably has nothing to do with anything, but my question is, what do you think you can do to better our school system, not just here in Rockford, but-
There's a couple of things, there's two things I'm really big on, is defense of the nation and education. If we're not defending the United States, education doesn't matter, because we're not gonna be here anyway. That's just being real. But what we have to do, we've got in the Seventeenth District, it's a, it's a school that we're trying to put a model together, and what they do is, they take some of the kids, and it's not tax-funded, I mean, this is an awesome situation, basically, they're able to shift over, and I just had my meeting Thursday with these folks, but what they do is, they take kids that are considered, you know, they come from hardship, you know, families to where they have some struggles, some issues. Yes, thank you. And what they do is, they just work with those kids, you know, in the classroom and kind of bring them up, but they've got like a line of over a thousand people trying to get into the school, here's the thing, we've got good teachers out there, you know, in Illinois, I think it's, is it four, are any teachers here? I think it's, is it four years in your tenure, automatically?
Yeah, it's because you can make it that long. I was in a, 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 in